Okay, let me call this meeting to order. I want to welcome everyone to the 2023 Underhill Town Meeting. It's a pleasure to be here today in person rather than doing only a virtual meeting, virtual hearing followed by Australian ballot voting as we've had to do the last couple of years because of the pandemic. My name is Dan Mans. My wife Liz and I live out on the Pleasant Valley Road. We've been in Underhill for about 40 years now, and I've served as the moderator for several years for the town. I'd like to invite you all to stand and join with me in the pledge of allegiance as we begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we need to begin today's meeting with Article One, which is to elect a moderator to serve for the coming year. You watch this very carefully. My term just ended, you see? And so we need to elect a moderator for the coming year. I'm going to turn the elections over to Dan Steinbauer, Chair of the Select Board.
Nominations for the position of Town Moderator are now open.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to nominate Dan Mans of Pleasant Valley as the moderator for the town Underhill 2023.
Dan Mans is nominated. Are there other nominations from the floor? Well, nominations, hearing no other, are now closed. All in favor of Dan Mans as our Town Moderator for the ensuing year, please say aye.
Aye.
It appears that it's a majority. Welcome to a new year, Dan Mans.
Thank you. I am getting just a little bit of echo through this. Can we? Thank you very much. Okay, so good morning again, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to continue this prestigious position as moderator for town meeting. Before we dig in on the warned articles of the day, let me try and share a little bit of information about the conduct of our meeting and our expectations for the day. As moderator, my job is only to help facilitate the will of this assembled body. I will do my best to preserve orderly dialogue and assure that we stay on track with the required procedural elements for town meeting. There's a few announcements to make as we get started. First off, the polls behind you are open for voting on the Australian ballot questions until 7:00 PM this evening. Please take an opportunity to cast your votes if you have not already done so. Under Vermont law, there were options this year about whether to hold this town meeting in person or virtually as we have done for the last couple of years. The Select Board considered this matter carefully in the interest of everyone's health and safety, balanced with the desire to give citizens of Underhill as much access as possible to participating in the decisions being made today. To help everyone be as comfortable as possible while attending, there are masks available right outside this door and hand sanitizer. And so if you would feel more comfortable wearing one, please know you're welcome to do so here. My colleagues at the Fire Department always like me to point out where the emergency evacuation exits are located. We have doors over here to my left and the main door that you came in on at the back of the room also. Our thanks to the Underhill Historical Society for arranging lunch. One of the most important parts of my job is to try and help us stay focused so that we can complete our business by noon and get everybody fed. If we need more time to get through the articles before us today, we can always take a break and set a time to return to continue our business. It has been tradition in Underhill for us to hear a few words from some of our state-elected officials at some point during today's meeting. Those folks are trying to get around and visit multiple towns, so when I see that they have arrived, I'll wait for a logical break in our business so that they can speak to us. I believe Edie Granting and Trevor Squirrel are both planning to be here sometime after they visit the Jericho Town Meeting today. Several people to thank for assistance with the conduct of today's meeting. Mount Mansfield Community Television is here. They're live streaming today's meeting, and it will be up on their website later on. So if you had so much fun here today, if you want to go home and replay it all, you'll have that opportunity. And they've got some nifty-whifty, super-duper technology that's enabling them to look around the audience as well as look up here towards the podium as well. Super Sounds DJ right over there, they're handling the sound system today. Our microphone runner, Amanda Bosley, is in the back, so whenever you go to speak, you raise your hand, be recognized, wait for Amanda to bring you a microphone. That way, everyone will be able to hear and they'll be able to get it captured on the video. Ruby and Georgia Bosley, the Bosley women are really like doing triple duty today. They're in the Home Economics Room providing childcare. And again, the Underhill Historical Society is offering donuts and coffee and lunch today. So lots of folks. Can I ask those of you who may be present that are not registered voters in the town of Underhill to please raise your hands and identify yourselves? Do we have anyone here who's not? Okay. One, two. So thank you. Only registered voters in town are allowed to vote or make motions. If there's no objections, we have historically allowed non-residents who are town employees or agents or affiliates of groups serving our community to speak about their reports or to answer questions that may come up. Calvin Coolidge once said, "Let men in office substitute the midnight oil for the limelight." At the outset of our work today, I would like to recognize some of the very hard-working people who served the town of Underhill. And as I call these groups, if you are in one or have ever been in one, please rise and remain standing. I'd like to recognize anyone who's an employee of the town of Underhill. Please stand. Okay, we've got a few in the back. Good. I'd like to invite anyone who holds an elected office in the town of Underhill to please stand. I would like to ask anyone who is a teacher or staff member in Underhill or anywhere in our local school district to please stand. I'd like to ask those who serve voluntarily on a town board, a committee, or similar group within Underhill to please stand. And I would like to ask anyone who provides services to Underhill through a private nonprofit group to please stand. Okay. Look around you, and let's give a round of applause to everyone standing. Thank you, and you can be seated. These are the folks that really burned the midnight oil to make Underhill the beautiful and special place it is to live. I would also suggest that serving as these folks do contributes to their individual quality of life as well as the collective community. And I encourage you to find a subject that you're passionate about and volunteer to serve. It can be very rewarding. All right, Robert's Rules of Order are the basic rules required for town meetings except where state law takes precedence. I know that Robert's Rules of Order can be a bit of a foreign language for many people, so I want to give you just a bit of a refresher in the elements that you will likely need for doing business today. We are going to work through the articles that were warned on the agenda, and an article must first be moved and then seconded by the body and then restated by the moderator before it is under consideration and debated. After I restate the motion, the person who made it generally gets the opportunity to speak first about it, and then debate can go on to other persons who are interested in speaking about that same motion. Once you've spoken on a particular article one time, you will not be recognized for a second round until all other voters who wish to speak have had an opportunity to do so. Again, if there's no objection, we'll follow our tradition of limiting speaking to about three minutes per person. All motions, remarks, and discussions must be addressed to the moderator. So when you speak, you're speaking to me. You're not answering someone else's question or diverting into dialogue with other people who are here. Each time, oh yeah, please wait for the microphone to arrive before you speak. When you speak, please give us your name and tell us where you live, like Dan Mans, Pleasant Valley Road. That's very helpful for those who are keeping notes and records of our meeting today, and I think it also gives others in the room kind of a context for who it is that's speaking, where they live. Once introduced, an article may only have one amendment at a time associated with them. So once an article is introduced, someone might say, "I would like to amend that article in the following way." If that amendment gets a second, we then go on to discussing that amendment. Okay, we'll then vote on the amendment before we go back to the main article. So the amendment would pass or not pass, and then the original article would be amended based on that amendment vote. Likewise, an amendment may only have one amendment. Let's hope we don't get this deep into Robert's Rules of Order, but someone could make an amendment, it could be under consideration, someone could raise their hand and say, "I would like to amend that amendment in the following way." We'll consider that, vote on it, then go back to the amendment, vote on it, and then go back to the main motion. Everybody with me so far on that? Okay. Easy to have the conversation drift off of the original motion, so please do your best to stay focused and keep your comments focused on whatever the original article or the amendment is that's under consideration. If along the way you get lost as to where are we in this whole discussion, please raise your hand and say, "Point of information." I will do my best to halt the debate at that point and ask what your question is or where it is you need clarification. This is not an opportunity to seek information about the subject being debated, but rather just a way of asking a procedural question. So for instance, once we vote on this amendment to the main motion, is there an opportunity to make another amendment before we vote on the main motion? That would be the kind of question that you might raise as a point of information. In our agenda today, Article Five is to transact any other non-binding business thought proper when met. Under that article, we have considerable latitude about subjects to discuss that were not considered elsewhere in this meeting. I will remind you, we cannot make any binding action on an Article Five issue. So you could not say, "Under Article Five..." Well, gee, I'd like to spend more money on this, or I think we need to build an airport in Underhill, or you know, whatever you might wish. We cannot take binding action under Article Five. The official warning for today's meeting has three Australian ballot questions. Those are Articles Six, Seven, and Eight. As such, those are not debatable or discussable today. Monday a week ago, February 27th, the Select Board held an informational hearing on Articles Seven and Eight. That's required by state statute, and when we get to those articles in our agenda, we will not need a motion to introduce them or a second. I will simply read the article as printed, and we'll move on to the next one. In my experience here in Underhill, we have been blessed with civil dialogue and debate at our past town meetings. And in the spirit of encouraging kind and respectful communication at this meeting, I offer a town meeting invocation from our neighbors in Danville. And I read, "We are gathered today in civil assembly. We gather as a community in the oldest sense of the word. We gather to learn and lead us to decisions about what is right and what is wrong. Let us advocate for our positions, but not at the expense of others. Let us remember there is an immense gap between saying, 'I am right,' and saying, 'I believe I am right,' and that our neighbors with whom we disagree are good people with hopes and dreams as true and high as our own. And let us always remember that in the end, caring for each other in this community is of far greater importance than any differences we may have." With that, let us get on to the business at hand. If you need a town report, there are also town reports out on the table outside the door, and those have the agenda for the day. So Article One was to elect a moderator for the ensuing year. That has been accomplished. Article Two is to hear the reports of the town officers. A motion on this article is appropriate at this time, but does not require a second as there is nothing we need to vote on after we have heard the reports. Anyone care to make a motion to hear the reports of the town officers? Nate Goldman has moved to hear the reports of the town officers, and a second is not required, so Article Two is to hear the reports of the town officers. At this point, I want to walk through the reports as printed, beginning on page 20 in the town report and going through page 79, and we'll walk through these briefly or in as much detail as folks need and give you an opportunity to ask any questions, clarifications, or the author of the report, if they have any additional remarks to make, may do so. So we begin on page 20 with the Select Board Report. Anything additional the Select Board would like to say?
No, open to questions.
Any questions on the Select Board Report as printed on page 20? None so appearing. Let's move on to the Town Administrator Report from Brad Holden, printed on page 21. Brad, any further comments you care to make? Okay. So any questions about the Town Administrator Report as presented on page 21? Super, none so appearing. Page 22 is the Assessor's Report. Any additional remarks, questions, comments, or observations about the Assessor's Report? Yes, we have one in the rear. Hang on, wait for the microphone. Not following instructions.
Jennifer Silpikatz, Underhill resident and town finance officer, animal control officer, and I think that's about it. I guess I just wanted to take an opportunity, this year we, Amanda received a promotion and became the town assessor, and I just wanted to say, both as a resident and as an employee of the town, how thrilled I am, and I think the Board made a great choice and really excited for her, and she's doing a great job. So thank you.
Thank you. On to the Road Foreman's Report, beginning on page, I guess, yeah, 23 and going over to page 24. Any comments, questions, discussion about the Road Foreman's Report? None so appearing. On to the Underhill Planning Commission. Oh, I'm sorry, we had a question over here. My apologies, sorry.
Sandy Romat, Poker Hill Road. My question is about when roads are, when trees are across the road and stuff on the weekend. I didn't know who to call, and I just wondered if we have a process for that sort of thing? Thank you.
Good question. Can our Road Foreman answer that, about what to do about a tree across the road on a weekend? Who should a citizen call?
Call me at home, or I got a pager, got a pager number, you can also call that, or do our best to get there as soon as possible.
Are those phone numbers available on the town website?
I do believe so.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions for the Road Foreman? Super, on to the Underhill Planning Commission on page 25. 25 and 26, yes.
I would like to introduce the newest member of our Town Hall staff. In case you haven't had a chance to meet him, who is the zoning administrator and also does work with planning, and that is Nick Atherton. He's sitting here in the front row, if you could stand and let people know who you are, and if you have any questions about zoning or ideas about planning, he would be the man to go to. Welcome, Nick.
You want to say anything? Thank you. Okay, anything for the Planning Commission on pages 25 and 26? All right, on to the Town of Underhill Conservation Commission, which I believe is, begins on page 27, goes over to page 29. Anything for the Conservation Commission? All right, we are on to the Natural Resources Inventory and Mapping Committee, otherwise known as the N R I M C, and beginning on page 30 and going over to page 31, I believe, yes, 30 and 31. Okay. We have the Permits and Development Review Board activities listed, beginning on page 32 and going through to page... Get this. Going through to page 40, I guess 41, and 42. So beginning on page 32 and going 10 pages over to page 42. Any questions, clarifications, comments? Anything for DRB? Okay. Beginning on page 43 and going over to 44, we have the Underhill Energy Committee Annual Report. Anything for the Underhill Energy Committee? On to page 45, 45 and 46, the Recreation Committee Report. I'm sure they're all out shoveling the hockey rink this morning. Moving on to page 47, the Underhill Highways Infrastructure and Equipment Committee. I guess just page 47. None there? On to page 48, our Forest Fire Wardens Report. Moving on to page 49, our Vital Statistics on 49 and 50. And then page 51, and I believe going over to page 52, we have the report on Casey's Hill, the Town Skating Rink, and the Tamasi Meadow. Any questions about those facilities or their use or anything contained in the report? Page, oh yes, I have one here. Hang on.
Holly Connell, Crew Grove. Yeah, I was just wondering if the one, the parking area that sort of was designated for a while for Tamasi Meadows was still available to folks? I'm not sure where that is.
Right, thank you. Question about the parking area there for Tamasi Meadow, the one sort of lowest on Pleasant Valley Road, is that the one you're referring to? Okay. Anybody have insight into that? Wow.
Get the steps in here, get the steps in. Anton Kelson, the Chair of the Recreation Committee. So that's available, that parking spot on the south end of Tamasi Meadows is available for winter parking. When the ground thaws a bit, we close it so that we don't cause a bunch of damage and issues and people getting stuck. So when the ground's frozen, it's open, and when it's thawed out, it's closed.
Thank you. So check your thermometer before driving over. Do one more, and then I see our representatives have arrived. We'll take a break after this one. Town of Underhill Ordinance for Winter Parking and Operations Plans. This is to enable for snow plowing, I believe. Any questions about our town ordinance on that? Okay, none so appearing. Let's take a small break in the review of our town officers' reports, and let me invite our elected state representatives up to give us a few words. And thank you both for coming and joining us today. I know you're doing double, triple duty, getting around to various other places, so thank you very much for coming.
I am, if everybody can hear me. Yeah. Hi, good morning. I'm Edie Granting. I am the newly elected representative. I am the newly elected representative for Jericho and Underhill. I was, just took office on the 4th of January, so I'm spending a lot of time getting to know everything that I need to know to do the job, and I've been, folks have been reaching out to me and have been really lovely about saying, "I know you're new, but could you?" So, I really appreciate that, thank you. I serve on the Commerce and Economic Development Committee, and we work on a lot of insurance and workforce development. So, if you want to know anything about any kind of insurance in Vermont, I'm learning. And if you want to know more about workforce development, we're working on that next week. So, we're looking at some, some new bills that have been working for the past couple of years, and how to continue to develop the not enough workers in Vermont that we have right now to fill all the jobs that we have. So, thank you so much, I really appreciate all the support so far, and I look forward to serving you at the State House.
Dan, you're pretty tall here, huh? Good morning, everyone. Representative Trevor Squirrel, and I also thank you for your support. I'm going into, or in my fourth biennial. The first four years of my tenure at the Legislature was the Natural Resources Committee, and the last two years, and going into these two years, I'm on House Appropriations, and as you're well aware of, in the last two years, been dealing with a pandemic, and we've had a lot of money that's flowed into the state in various forms, either directly to you as individuals, members of the state of Vermont, and also to the state coffers in the order of over $1.5 billion. And we've made a real effort to be strategic in how we've spent that money, whether it be housing and childcare and workforce development where we could, water infrastructure, things like that. And now, we're taking a look at how strategic we've been, how successful have we been with those expenditures and appropriations, and we're evaluating those programs, and, but we still, you know, this influx of money that's come into the state has also sort of juiced our economy, so we're also seeing other surpluses and other elements of the economy. And currently in this year, we have about a $300 million surplus to work with. We're also thinking very hard about, we want to set aside some of that in order to help us draw down additional monies in the future, such as the Infrastructure Jobs Act that just recently passed, but it's bringing also close to another billion dollars to the state of Vermont. So, again, it's, I've enjoyed my time, I am enjoying my time in the Legislature, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Do you have time for a couple of questions? We can do that. I don't know if anyone has any questions for our representatives, but we have a couple of moments.
Scott Hinman, Poker Hill. Questions on two, two issues, quite frankly. One, having lost friends to suicide, being an Army Vet, a Russian linguist, now a disabled Army Vet, I want to know why you think this Suicide Prevention Act will solve anything? Instead of infringing on Article 16 of the Vermont Constitution, why not actually approach the root of the problem, which is the mental health crisis? My other question is, how do each of you plan to vote on the so-called grossly misnamed Affordable Heat Act?
I'll try to speak to the Affordable Heat Act. This is sort of the second iteration of the clean heat standard that was discussed in the Legislature over the last couple of years. Right now, it's just come out of the Senate, we're both House Representatives, and we haven't seen that bill, although we know about the, some of the conversation has been there. I think that, at least me personally, I want to see what's come out of the Senate and see what those details are. There's a lot of conversation. I think the concept behind it, and weaning ourselves out of fossil fuels is the right thing to do, no question about that. There's a lot of conversation and discussion around the savings to be had from this piece of legislation. What I'm not comfortable with right now is what's happening on the cost side of the equation for various folks, whether you're middle income or low income, or you can afford it, let's say, and the impact that can have. So, and until I've had that opportunity to have that conversation, I'm not sure where I stand in terms of voting on the Affordable Heat Act. So, I look forward to that conversation. Certainly, I think Edie and I would both say our inboxes are totally full with people's opinions about this particular issue, and we listen, we hip listen to what you say to us, and take that on board, and we'll be having a lot more conversation about that. And I encourage people to continue to interact with us about that. Thank you.
Just to add, maybe I can't...okay. Just to add two things about the Affordable Heat Act. The first one is that setting a clean heat standard doesn't cost any money, and it's part of what will get us to our goals for the state of Vermont in reducing, so we know, right, so we know what the limits are, so we know what that understanding is. So, will help get us to the goals that we have set toward reducing our fossil fuel emissions. I think there's a lot of misinformation about what's going to, how folks are going to have to pay for this, and there's not a lot in the bill that is expensive. There's a study in the bill, as it stands, and so I think that there's, just pay attention to the misinformation and the fear mongering about it, because I think everybody wants to have a better environment in Vermont, we all want to have a reduced dependence on those fossil fuels, and we all know that we can't afford to do it in one jump, we can't afford, it's just not something that we can do. So, we're working on figuring out how to do it slowly, and so when you see somebody kind of trying to get you riled up and upset about it, take a step back and say, "They're not going to make us pay for all of this." And look at Oregon, Oregon did something similar, and it did not increase costs significantly. So, please, just, you know, no, we have no interest in pricing anybody out of living in Vermont, we just want to make Vermont a great place for everyone to live. So, please, just be patient with us on that, you know, it's slowly coming to us, we haven't really had the chance to look at it in the House yet. And then the Suicide Prevention Bill, we have an exorbitantly high rate of suicides due to gun in Vermont, and that's where, if you look at the numbers, it's 88% I believe of the suicides in Vermont, and so I know that, I know that there is a lot more that needs to happen in that bill to prevent suicide, and that we completely agree on, and it doesn't address a lot of those issues. So, I think that, again, the bill hasn't come to the floor yet, the bill is, you know, we're looking at it. But it's an issue, and it's a terrible issue that we've been having to deal with in Vermont, and we're looking at the best ways that we can address it.
Okay, so the so-called safe storage provision in that clears by Article 16 of the Vermont Constitution. That the people have a right to bear arms for the defense of themselves and the state. How, in a town like Underhill, where we have no police force, where most of us live in rural areas, how can I defend myself, other than with strategically placed baseball bats all around my home, which I have? How am I supposed to defend myself if my gun is locked in one room and my ammunition in another? It is a violation of the Constitution. If the Legislature wants to change the Constitution, they have shown a willingness to do that last year. I have no problem with that, but stop trying to do it covertly without being open about what your actual goals are.
Are there any, any other questions for our elected representatives over here?
Kurt Johnson, Mountain Vista Road. February, you said there's a $300 million surplus this year? Is there any intention on the Legislature's part to use some of that towards helping the towns with their financials with regard to infrastructure spending, roads, bridges, and so forth?
I'll probably need to get back to you as far as specifics go, but I know that there is money being made available for infrastructure work, for bridges and roads in towns. I just don't know exactly what those numbers are for, let's say, our community at this point in time, which is Underhill and Jericho. So, it's probably not so much coming out of the additional money and surplus, it's coming out of the IIJA, which is the new federal money that's out there, and that's still being discussed, and decisions are still being made about how that works, or how that's going to, how that money might flow to the various towns.
Thank you. I'm aware of the funding procedure that you're mentioning. I think most towns are finding that they are struggling with their infrastructure spending. The state has an opportunity where it has this great surplus to maybe help add some to that, rather than the standard amount that's been doled out year after year. That's what I'm really trying to get at, is if we have the surplus, can we figure out a way to give some of that back to the towns?
Well, and I think one of the answers to that is that, actually, it's in the governor's recommended to the House and to the Legislature to set aside a certain amount of money, because the Infrastructure Jobs Act is federal money that requires state match, so in order for us to draw it all down. So, we're having a conversation with the administration about how much of the surplus we might want to set aside as a state match for that. So, I guess the answer to your question is, yes, we're certainly contemplating that, and I suspect, I'm not sure what the number might look like, but there'll be some money that's set aside for that match.
Can I add? Yeah, in the Budget Adjustment Act, there were $3 million set aside for towns for this purpose. However, I know it's not a lot of money, and it's budget adjustment, so it's March to July, and it's probably not going to impact Underhill and Jericho, because it's designed for towns with much less support than we have here. But it is a clear indication that that's a focus, right? It's how do we get more infrastructure money to towns, because we know that we need housing, we can't, we don't have housing for workers, we don't have housing for Vermonters, it's too expensive. And one of the main ways to do that is through this infrastructure. So, to make it, you know, more affordable to build, because if you have water there, you don't have to build a well, too, right? So, there are pieces there. So, that's in the housing bill, and there is will on both sides of the aisle, so it's important, it's a good question, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify one thing, the $3 million in the budget adjustment that Edie is referring to is not money for the infrastructures, it's for the planning and to access those monies that are out there.
Any other questions? Great opportunity while we have our elected officials here.
Lori Adams, Silly Hill Road. I don't think enough is done to address mental health needs earlier for children and adolescents, and that's where a lot of this starts, and would help the suicide rate. I don't think the question is just guns, and I'd like to know what's being done. I know a lot is not being done in the schools, because I've looked at what the schools encourage, and a lot of it is just encouraging kids to get into college, and I think there needs to be more prevention programs, and it's something that concerns me a lot.
I'm going to take my Legislature hat off and put my school board hat on, because I serve on the Mount Mansfield School Board, I'm the Chair right now. We have put in a significant addition to the budget for mental health supports, including, I believe, five positions over the last three years, so it's a big focus in our schools. And yes, the Legislature has, is looking at ways to support mental health services in Vermont as well. There isn't, you know, everything is so complicated, there isn't one simple way to fix the problems that we have, and so this is one of the focuses that is a priority.
Guy Kennedy, South Hill Drive. I don't know the names of the programs, but I'm referring to the health system for lower income, and I know that in the very bottom tier, that it's very affordable. Information I've been, that's been spoken to me about this, has led me to believe that it's a very, very difficult step for a person to increase their income above a certain threshold, and then have healthcare be an affordable thing. There's a tremendous step in the cost of the healthcare, and I, for one, would like to see all the structure of assisted programs made such that people can leverage their way up in society with their income, and not be locked down and oppressed into a low-income situation where it's untenable to move up. And to me, this would also help people that are perhaps self-employed and unable to move their employment business into growing and expanding, because they cannot afford healthcare. So, that's something of great interest to me.
No, I, it's a question that's been out there for a long time, right? And we provide benefits and support and assistance to folks, and a lot of it's based on income levels, and we hear about benefits cliffs all the time in our committees, and they haven't gone away, and they're still there. So, that if people make more money, all of a sudden, they find that they don't have access to certain supports and those kinds of programs. So, it's an ongoing conversation in our healthcare and human services committees, as we look at making sure that everyone has an opportunity to grow and to be successful in life in Vermont. But I hear you loud and clear.
And I'll just add that as part of our workforce development, we've been looking at this, too, is if people get into the workforce and get a better job, where does that put them on the benefits? And if getting a better job is something that causes them to be in a worse position, then we're not doing them any favors. So, we are all trying to understand how it works, and a lot of it is federal benefits, some of it is state, so some of it, we're going to have to figure out in a, you know, in a way with the federal government. I think that it's a conversation that's happening nationwide, though, so that will be beneficial for all of us, but we're looking at it, thank you.
We're back here.
So, I'd just like to remind everybody that Trevor and Edie, every month are over next door at the Deborah Rossin Library for additional conversation, and sometimes even a length, more lengthy conversation on topics that you want. So, don't think this is the only time you have a chance in person to ask them, show up at the library. And your next date is?
It's the 16th, it's a week from Thursday. And it's available virtually, too, so you can join us from your living room or wherever you have your virtual device.
And that was Bill Frank, a retired representative. Great opportunity for conversation here, yeah, we got one more.
Hi there, Scott Brinker, Route 15. As I stand here, I look at the name up there, the Raiders, and I see the town of Rutland had an issue with that name. I'm wondering if we're going to have a problem here in Underhill, and what will happen if some groups come along, like they just recently have, and want the town to change the name? What will happen in Underhill? And I'm curious, with all these groups that want the names changed, are they willing to put the money up for the schools, for all the money that it... to put the money up for the schools, for all the money that it takes to change the name? That's my question.
Fair question. Let me, let me take our elected representatives off the hook on that one and say, not sure it's a state-level question. I think it's more of a school and town question than anything that they're really gonna be able to address, is my fair on that? Okay. But thanks, I think your comment was heard. Other questions for our state representatives while they're here? We've covered a great range of subjects today. None so appearing. I'll thank you both for your time and joining us today. We'll resume with Article Two. Sorry about that. I believe we left off on page 54 with the report from the American Red Cross. We're now moving into groups and organizations that provide services and support to our towns. Any questions, comments, clarifications about the American Red Cross report? Seeing none, how about the Boy Scouts, Troop 627, report on page 55? Anything for our Boy Scouts? Nothing so appearing there. The Chittenden Solid Waste District report begins on page 56 and I believe goes over to page 57. Anything for Chittenden Solid Waste? Okay, nothing there. The Essex Rescue Report begins on page 58 and goes over through page 60, I believe. Nothing there. The Green Mountain Transit Report is on page 61. Any requests, comments, considerations there? I believe the Deborah Rossin Memorial Library Report begins on page 62 and goes through page 63. Anything for the library? The Jericho Underhill Water District Trustees Annual Report is on page 64. Anything for the Water District? All right, none so appearing. The Mills Riverside Park Report is on page 65 and goes over onto page 66. Anything for Mills Riverside Park? The Mount Mansfield Community Television Report is on page 67. You can speak directly into the camera and get on, you know, film about this if you wish, so. Any questions for Mount Mansfield Community TV? Okay, Our Community Cares Camp Incorporated, their report is on page 68 and 69. Any questions about Our Community Cares Camp? Nothing there. We have Age Wells Report on page 70. Anything for Age Well, Vermont? The Underhill Historical Society Report is on page 71. Anything for the Underhill Historical Society? Notice they did not print the menu for lunch today, but other than that, no. The Underhill Jericho Fire Department Report begins on page 72 and I believe goes over to page 74. Anything for the Underhill Jericho Fire Department? Matt Champlin, Chief, please.
I just wanted to thank everybody in the community of Underhill for their support of the Fire Department. A few years back, we started a first response group. We've had a tremendous outpouring of volunteers to support that group. We run, we ran 500-plus calls last year, first response only, and that group of people covered 95% of those calls. So it's a tremendous dedication to supporting the community. So again, thank you to all the volunteers and thank you to the community for your support. We are always looking for more members. We have an open house coming May 13th this year. We'd love to see you all there. And if you're interested, please reach out to either the Fire Department itself about joining the Fire Department, or I bet some of you have neighbors that are on the department, and you can reach out to them. Thank you.
And we all thank you. I believe we are on to the University of Vermont Health Net Report, Health and Hospice, maybe, on page 75 and goes over to page 76. Anything for UVM Health Network? The Vermont Department of Health Local Health Office Report begins on page 77, and I guess that's, it's a one-pager. Okay, nothing for Local Health. The Harvest Crossing Affordable Homes Annual Report is on page 78. Any questions for them? All right, the Jericho Farmers Market Report for the 2022 season is on page 79. Okay, and I believe we may have covered material on pages 80 and 81 where we had Trevor and Edie here with us. Is there anything else on those that? Everybody has? Okay, and then we have the Official Warning of the Mount Mansfield Union School District, and I believe that brings us to the end of our reports. That's a separate matter for voting on Australian ballot, I believe. So I think that ends the reports of our town officers and cooperative groups. Okay, so we are now on to Article Three. And Article Three reads, Shall the Voters Approve Total General Fund Expenditures of $1,383,026, of which $1,173,656 shall be raised by taxes, $209,370 by non-tax revenues pursuant to 24 VSA Section 2664? A motion on Article Three is now in order. Okay, we have a motion and roll in a second here? And a second. Okay, so Article Three, and I'll restate again, Shall the Voters Approve Total General Fund Expenditures of $1,383,026, of which $1,173,656 shall be raised by taxes, $209,370 by non-tax revenues pursuant to 24 VSA Section 2664? So we have a motion, a second, and we reread. Okay, so the floor is now open for discussion on the town's annual budget, and I believe, let me go back and clarify where that is in the town report. I believe that begins on page seven and goes over to page 13, I believe. Did I get that right? No. Page seven to?
Seven to the very top part of 12.
Oh, got it. Seven to the very top part of 12. Thank you. Right, down to line 217 there. Thank you. Appreciate that. Any questions, discussion on the town budget? Yes, over here. Bringing you a microphone there.
Rick Hay, Kelly Road. I would like to acknowledge and thank our Select Board members for the challenging work that they do managing our town affairs, much of it thankless. I also want to recognize that for the last 18 years, the stipend they receive is a mere $1,500 annually. Therefore, I'd like to amend the budget and propose that we increase the stipend from $1,500 to $2,500 per individual. And if we're feeling particularly generous, we might consider raising it to $3,000 per person. I'll leave that.
All right, so you, let me just say, you're proposing an amendment to the budget. I hear you saying proposing an increase to the budget. And I believe originally you said from 15 to 25, which would be a $3,000 increase. We need to get to a specific dollar amount because what we're gonna do is make an adjustment to the total bottom line of the budget.
Right, it's for three individuals.
For three individuals. So if they went from $1,500 annual stipend to $2,500, that would be a $1,000 per three individuals.
$3,000.
If my math is correct, that would be $3,000, and I believe that would get us up to $1, 386,026 on the bottom line of the budget. Is that your, is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, is there a second to increase the budget by 3,000? I saw a hand over here. State your name. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the amendment. So we are now open for discussion about the amendment, and we will vote on the amendment, and then we will go back and vote on the original budget, Article Three, whether it goes up or stays the same depending on the amendment vote. Okay, so comments over here. Please try and keep comments focused on the amendment as it's considered now.
Guy Kennedy in South Hill. I completely support this. It's, for anybody that's been to these town meetings over a lifetime, as I have, it's an absolutely thankless job, and it really is a contribution to the town that these people will even take this. And I look at this as a stipend, and we could express that in thanks with another $1,000 per person easily. Thank you.
Other comments, I see over here in the back, and then we'll come back up front.
Seth Friedman, Pleasant Valley Road. I'm not sure how I do this process, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that's enough money. I would propose $5,000 per person. I served on the Select Board. I was Chair of the Select Board. At times, the hours were amazing, what you put in. It interferes with your life and your livelihood and your family. And as a town, spending $15,000 on such a thing, out of all of our pockets, would be literally pennies or a cup of coffee, I'm sure. So I love Rick's idea, but I don't think it goes far enough.
Okay, so let me, let me try and address the procedural question there. If, if folks in the assemblage were inclined to agree that the amount should be higher, what you would want to do is vote this amendment down, and then another amendment to the main motion on the budget could be a higher amount to the bottom line for the same purpose. So, so we would need to defeat this amendment and then replace it with a higher amount if folks wanted something above the 3,000 increase already under consideration. Does that make sense? Did I clarify that? Okay. All right, we have, wait, we had a comment over here, and then we'll get one over here. Hang on.
Point of information.
Point of information, go ahead.
Peter Mottolo, Hedgehog Hill. Could we entertain an amendment to the amendment, or do we need to defeat this amendment?
Need to defeat this amendment, and then we'll, then we'll go back. Right, thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, Polly Connell, Krug Road. Just, I wonder if someone here could give us a little historical perspective on what, how often the Select Board has received raises? Like, when was the last time, for instance? Give us a sense how this has rolled out over the years.
Don't know if anybody has. Oh, Brad Holden, our town administrator believes he can answer that question. Go ahead.
Well, I can tell you that Seth and I served at the same time, roughly around 2010. It hasn't changed since then. Prior to that, I believe it was only $500. So I wholeheartedly agree with everything that was said here. I probably interact with the Select Board more than just about everyone here, and I would say that just the fuel alone in their vehicles, traveling to and from the office, to and from the town garage, about town, they don't get reimbursed for their mileage. So I would be in favor also, speaking as a resident, of increasing the stipend.
Ninety was the last time. Okay. It's only been 33 years. Okay. Grab one more right up here behind you? Yeah?
Kevin Campbell from Sugar Hill Road. Maybe just a point of suggestion or order. If we have a motion on the floor to increase it, those who are in favor of increasing it should probably vote in favor. And then if we want to increase it more, we could do that as another amendment.
You could do that as well. And I will also point out, I think the, technically what happens here is the bottom line of the budget gets increased. The budget is a guidance document for the Select Board, and they have considerable latitude in, you know, exactly how many dollars they apply to each subject. So increasing the budget 3,000, you could then increase the budget again. It's really up to the Select Board It's really up to the select board how they ultimately apply those increases, but I think they're getting clear guidance from the group here today about expectations. So are we ready for a vote on this amendment? Okay. The amendment is to increase the budget as presented on Article Three by three thousand dollars. That would make the bottom line of the budget under consideration one million three hundred eighty-six thousand twenty-six dollars. That's the amendment. Question over here.
I'm Bob Linda from Pleasant Valley Road, and I just want to... I'm not clear whether... Are we voting... If we want to vote for more, are we voting this amendment down, or are we voting for this amendment and then amending it?
The two strategies are, you could vote for this amendment, and then if someone wished to propose an additional increase, they could do that. Alternatively, you could vote this one down, and someone could substitute it with another amendment for a higher amount.
That sounds rather messy.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendment as proposed to increase the bottom line of the budget by three thousand dollars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. So we are now back to consideration of Article Three with the amended amount of one million three hundred eighty-six thousand twenty-six dollars. Floor is now open for discussion on that or for other amendments.
I'd like to return to the idea of a five thousand dollar stipend for each select board member. Dan or Jen, you can do the math. I'm not the math guy.
I believe that would... I believe that would amount to... I believe what your proposed amendment would be, would be to increase the dollar figure that was just approved by an additional six thousand dollars, and that six thousand... Six thousand, it would be two additional thousand. You're up to three thousand per select board member now. Oh, I'm sorry. You're up to twenty-five hundred. Excuse me. You're correct. Twenty-five hundred. Twenty-five hundred now, and so it would be another seven thousand five hundred dollars. And so seven thousand five hundred on top of the one three eighty-six zero-two-six would get us to... One three nine three five two six. Five-two-six. And that would be one million three hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred twenty-six dollars, which would be an increase to the amount raised by taxes. Okay, this would all be raised by taxes. So we have a motion and a second. Seth, let me not put words in your mouth. I want to be clear that that was the motion. Okay. So the amendment on the floor now is to increase the budget by an additional seventy-five hundred, get us to one million three hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred twenty-six. Discussion on that, yes, right over here.
Meg Armstrong, Silly Hill Road. Do the amendments have to... Or can they say what this money is being increased for?
You can say that, but in the end, it's a select board decision about how they actually apply the money. I mean...
I would like... I think the amendment should say that the town... Why we wanted to increase the budget.
I think the budget increase, the discussion, I think, is clear to the select board that the intent of the town is for this to be applied to the select board stipend. Other questions, comments, discussion on this? None so appearing. The amended... The amendment is to increase the bottom line of the general fund expenditures to get to one million three hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred twenty-six dollars, and that additional seventy-five hundred in this amendment would be in the raised by taxes figure. Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Okay, so we are back to the main motion, which would now be, shall the voters approve total general fund expenditures? Let me read the total general fund expenditures of one million three hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred twenty-six, of which... And Brad, do you have the new number for raised by taxes? One eighty... Eleven eighty-four.
One fifty-six.
One fifty-six. One million one hundred eighty-four thousand one hundred fifty-six to be raised by taxes, and the two hundred nine three seventy by non-tax revenues would remain the same pursuant to twenty-four VSA twenty-six sixty-four. And Dan Steinbauer.
Comment about the last amendment that was passed. Thank you for your support, for making the motion, for talking about it, and for voting on it. The comment often for the select board is referred to as thankless. I heard it a couple times here already. I'm not sure I totally agree with that, because when a machinery works well, it is a delight, and that is certainly thanks enough. I think this additional stipend, while I personally can say I don't have my hand out, this additional stipend makes it attractive, because it is a time commitment, and it might be attractive to someone who really wants to do it, but they have to give something up in order to do it. And while you can't, you know, use that as a way to make a living, and I think that the state legislature, you know, has had the same conversation over the years for their legislator reimbursement. But anyway, it makes it more of an attractive kind of proposition and may excite somebody to serve who might be in the wings. So I thank you for that insight. While the select board is the elected legislative body of the town, I want to say that my belief is that, and I think I can speak for my colleagues, that we're happy to do that when we are called to do that. But it's my belief that the real life, if you will, the real motivation for the town working well, and I appreciate Dan's initiation of having people stand up, you remember that? You folks who come here, who are volunteering, the select board wants to support that, and we affirm that, and we acclaim that. And for all the people who come here to vote, it pretty much covers most everybody here, I really express my appreciation for your involvement, because it makes our work as the legislative body of the town a bit easier and not quite so thankless.
So we are back to the main motion as amended, which now reads, shall the voters approve... Okay. We're gonna get accurate numbers here. Thank you. Somebody else with a calculator in the back spotted some technical flaw, I think. Yeah, got way over what I can do up here. Okay, so our Accutronics scoring system now says, shall the voters approve total general fund expenditures of one million three hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred twenty-six, and of which one million one hundred eighty-four thousand one hundred fifty-six would be raised by taxes, two hundred nine thousand three seventy by non-tax revenues pursuant to twenty-four VSA Section twenty-six sixty-four. Everybody ready for a vote on the budget? All those in favor of the article as just read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Thank you. We are on to Article Four. Article Four is, shall the voters approve total highway fund expenditures of one million eight hundred eleven thousand five hundred sixty, of which one million six hundred thirty-six thousand five sixty shall be raised by taxes, one hundred seventy-five thousand by non-tax revenue pursuant to twenty-four VSA Section twenty-six sixty-four. A motion is in order for Article Four at this time. Polly, we need a microphone up there?
Sorry, I'm a little confused. I did have another item question about number three, and we quickly switched to Article Did I not say that right?
Article Three has been passed by the voters.
So we moved on. If I have a question about a line item that comes under Article Three, I'm too late.
You can ask a question about it, but you're too late to amend the budget.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that's a good place for it, yeah. So on page ten, it's line item one forty-five, under purchase services. It's the cost of hiring Chittenden County Sheriff.
Yes.
And my question is, what is the additional eighteen thousand dollars going to be spent on in fiscal year twenty-four? I mean, I'm ecstatic, and I have a personal agenda about how I'd like to spend that money, but I wonder what people are... What that extra money's going for.
Anybody on the select board address that?
Line item one forty-five builds into the budget ten hours a week for the sheriff at sixty-five dollars an hour. This is a four-hour-per-week increase over fiscal year twenty-three, and it's an increase in their hourly rate as well. So they've... They're charging us more per hour for every hour that they're here, plus we're looking to increase the number of hours that they're here patrolling in the town of Underhill. Up to, we're building into be at ten hours. Right now, we're at, I think, six.
Increase in hours for patrol coverage?
Patrol coverage to be ten hours per week.
Get your microphone.
Yeah, how much of that time that the sheriff gives us is for traffic surveillance? I'm getting around to traffic surveillance and how...
A hundred percent. The time that they spend here is dedicated to traffic enforcement. They're not serving papers or trying to solve crime or anything like that. Their main focus is to deter people from speeding on our roads and trying to, you know, minimize that.
If I have a particular grievance about where the speeding is happening in town, when's the time to talk about that? Have I missed it?
I'd say any select board meeting, you're more than welcome to come to any meeting to let us know. You know, we have a public comment period in the beginning and at the end, and if there's a particular problem with anyone that they have, you know, to please come and let us know, and we certainly can take that information and give that to the sheriff and say, you know, we have a problem on Green Street, or whatever the problem may be, and, you know, we'd like to have them try to focus in that area.
Okay. Thank you.
Article Five, other business thought-proper women. Okay. Go ahead.
I just wanted to add to that. We've heard from several residents of speeding issues this year, and in addition to increasing the sheriff time, we've also made a line of investment in flashing speed limit lights to help reduce speeders through hotspots within the town. So we are well aware, but we invite additional comments if you have specific issues.
Okay. Back to Article Four, approving the total highway fund expenditures of one eighty-one one five six zero, of which one million six thirty-six five sixty to be raised by taxes, one hundred seventy-five thousand by non-tax revenue pursuant to twenty-four VSA Section twenty-six sixty-four, and a motion is in order for Article Four. I heard motion over here. Do we have a second on the highway fund budget? Second over here. So we have a motion and a second on Article Four, which reads, shall the voters approve total highway fund expenditures of one million eight hundred eleven five sixty, of which one million six thirty-six five sixty shall be raised by taxes, one hundred seventy-five thousand by non-tax revenue pursuant to twenty-four VSA Section twenty-six sixty-four. And I believe that budget begins on page twelve at line two-eighteen and runs through halfway down page thirteen. Floor is now open for questions, comments, amendments, any other action on the highway
Kurt Johnson, Mountain Vista Road. I'd like to make an amendment to increase the highway budget by about five percent or a hundred thousand dollars. We'll get into discussion as to why on that.
Okay, so we have a motion to increase the highway fund budget by a hundred thousand dollars, which I believe would get us to a bottom line of one million nine hundred eleven five sixty, of which one million seven hundred thirty-six five sixty would be raised by taxes and one hundred seventy-five thousand by non-tax revenue pursuant to twenty-four VSA Section twenty-six sixty-four. and 175,000 by non-tax revenue pursuant to 24 VSA Section 2664. So we have a motion, do we have a second on that? We have a second on that in the back. So we have a motion and a second for the amendment. Kurt, would you like to say anymore about that?
So Dan, we've been running a reserve for the Highway Capital Fund that's been near zero for several years now. If we have a hiccup in the town where there's something that comes up, it's going to be difficult to contain it within the budget without seeing a significant increase. Over the years, we've used our highway reserve in order to kind of balance things out from year to year. And we've gotten away with it the last few years by running it where it is, near zero, but we're gonna end up at some point getting bit by that. So the intention of this increase of 100,000 would be to add it to the Highway Capital Reserve Fund. The reason it wasn't really included in this budget was at the time, we didn't know what the education tax was gonna be when the budget was being created by the Select Board. Seeing that notification just arrived in our mail recently, and it's looking like the MMU School Board budget is relatively flat compared to where it was last year. We still don't have the state numbers, which will come, I think Sherry knows that date, but sometime in June. My sense is it's gonna be relatively low increase this year for education tax. So it's kind of a good timing for us to take this one and cover it. That's my nickels worth on it.
Thank you. Thank you, so the floor is now open for discussion on the proposed amendment, which is to add 100,000 to the bottom line of the highway budget.
Just as a point of information, I guess, is there any reason why some of the stimulus funds that were allocated to our town can't serve that purpose instead of raising a tax rate?
I'm sorry, some of the what kind of funds?
The stimulus funds.
Stimulus funds.
The federal stimulus package.
Okay. Question, yes? Kurt, you have the answer for that, I'll allow you to speak on that again.
If you're referring to the ARPA funds? Yeah, and I don't know if Jen Silpik is here, but for the most part, the ARPA funds aren't available to be used for highway expenses. It's federal monies that have been given to municipalities, and if you look at how it's been earmarked, the rules are that it's really not intended to go towards paving and bridge construction and that type of thing. It is, but it's a different kind of infrastructure, broadband. Jen, maybe you can speak up for some of the other things that it's good for. Affordable housing, but not paving, bridge construction, culverts.
I think we can get a...
So the ARPA money... Oh, sorry, Jennifer Silpikatz. The ARPA money is intended, it could be used for any expense that the Select Board chooses. However, the intention of what Kurt is talking about is putting the money into a reserve fund. The ARPA money cannot be put into a fund or a savings account. That money has to be committed to be spent by 12/31/2024 and spent out of the pocket of Underhill's checking account by the 31st of December 2026. So it doesn't serve the purpose of ARPA.
Thank you. Other questions, comments on the proposed amendment? Yes, I see one right here behind you.
Karen McKnight, Bear Town Road. My question is, how much more will that increase our property taxes?
Great question.
I think maybe it's a question for Jen.
Yeah, is there... Jen, did you hear that question? The question was, how much would 100,000 increase property taxes? What would that amount to? I don't know if she's able to do the quick math on that and give us a rough estimate or not.
That amounts to about one penny on the tax rate.
One penny.
Kurt's saying that it might be two, hold on, I have to look. One penny is $54,000, and this would be 100,000, so it's about two pennies on the tax rate.
Two pennies on the tax rate. Good question.
I think that answers the question.
Good. Thank you. Other questions on the amendment? Okay, so at this point, we are voting on an amendment to add 100,000 to the total highway fund expenditures, and that would raise that amount to 1,911,560, of which 1,736,560 will be raised by taxes and 175,000 by non-tax revenue. So we're only voting now to raise the bottom line by 100,000, and then we'll go back and need a vote on the main article. So, everybody ready for a vote? Everybody understand where we are? Okay, all in favor of the amendment of adding 100,000 to the highway fund budget, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes appear to have it, the i's do have it. Okay, so we're now back to the main motion on Article Four at the amended amount which raised up by 100,000. Any other questions, comments, amendments for the budget? The highway budget? I don't want to be accused of going too fast here, we okay? All right. Yes, question back here.
What does the Highway Reserve Fund stand at now, if anything?
Highway Reserve Fund current status, do we know the answer to that question?
I don't have the exact number, but it's like less than $20,000. Jen, maybe you can confirm that?
In the neighborhood of less than $20,000. Somewhere between three cents and $20,000, okay. Other? Sure. Brad Holden, up there.
Yeah, I would just like to say or bring to everyone's attention that in the past, we've always enjoyed a healthy reserve in our highway department. You know, unlike the general fund, when there's excess monies, money can be carried over into the next year in the highway budget. So we've enjoyed having that cushion, and it scares me to death that we don't have that any longer. So I fear, you know, flooding is imminent. We get caught, you know, we do have 20% of our operating budget on hand at all times, but when it really hits the fan, you know, we need some operating capital. So I'm just all in favor of trying to get our reserves back up. It doesn't mean we're gonna spend that money, but it just gives us that little bit of cushion that we've long enjoyed and don't have any longer.
Thank you for that explanation. Are we ready for a vote on the... Yes, sorry, go ahead.
I just want to make a comment that the money that's put in the Highway Reserve Fund, it's my understanding that it has to come for voter approval if we were to spend that money in the reserve fund. So it's not like we arbitrarily will be able to use that money. We would have to come forward to the voters and ask for, no.
Let's get a microphone. Restate the question, please, Nick.
So the question is, can we put it in a reserve fund without voter approval? And I guess my comment would be, this is voter approval, correct? Spending it from... So after it's put into the reserve fund, then it's open to the Select Board to spend it as needed to close budgets and cover expenses related to the highways? Restricted to highway expenses, not general.
Right, the fund, so the question is, does it require voter approval or could the Select Board expend those funds once they're in? And the answer I heard was that the Select Board could expend these funds on highway-related activities.
So yeah, and more or less, it's not a restricted fund, it's a reserve. So we have, when we have surplus, it goes into a reserve, highway reserve. So you can't take highway money and put it into the general fund. We can go from the general fund and put it into the highway, but now we're taking away monies that we had budgeted for general expenditures and having to cover the highway, that happens. But in having a reserve in the highway, it's dedicated for that, for purposes, and the Select Board, as I understand it, can use it as they see fit.
And just one final comment to the amount that is currently in the highway reserves on page 16. If you go down to the monies in the, near the bottom where it says committed, there's a Highway Capital Reserve and a Contingency Reserve. The Capital Reserve is 16983 and the contingency is 684. So a little less than 20,000.
Closer to 20,000 and four cents, so, okay, good. Okay, we are back to Article Four, having been amended one time to add 100,000. So the vote we're about to have is, shall the voters approve total highway fund expenditures of 1,911,560, of which 1,736,560 shall be raised by taxes and 175,000 by non-tax revenue pursuant to 24 VSA Section 2664. All those in favor of the revised Article Four as just read, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes appear to have it, the i's do have it. Okay, we are on to Article Five, which is to transact any other non-binding business, thought proper, when we meet. We do not need a motion or a second on this article because we will not be doing any voting on anything, but this is an opportunity to express a thought, to propose a new area of exploration or something else. So I see a hand up over here first.
Hi, I'm Essie Howe from Pleasant Valley Road. And we have a newly convened Green Burial Task Force to look at what the options are relative to this. And our first task has been to prepare a survey, and some of you may have seen it on Front Porch Forum. It is going to be linked, the link will be on Front Porch Forum again today. And I also have some paper surveys out in the hall here. If someone would like to fill it out here, that's fine.
Thank you. And I saw a hand over here.
Hello, Guy Kennedy, South Hill. Some months ago, we were solicited for input for the federal stimulus monies to try to give direction. And I was hoping that perhaps that could be addressed as to where that stands and what direction it looks like things are going.
Again, I believe you're probably referring to the ARPA funds, is that, okay. So I know Bill Frank is in the back here, I believe he's chairing the ARPA committee. Do you, can you give us just a moment of sort of where that is in process?
So the Select Board formed a committee to look at proposals on how best to spend the ARPA fund. There's a seven committee member, a seven-person committee, and I was elected chair of that. And we have spent a lot of time, and I think, well, all of you have got a postcard in the mail that we mailed out looking for proposals, of which we received 50 or 51 proposals. We have carefully reviewed all of those proposals. There's a couple of them that did not meet the requirements for the ARPA fund. But other than that, they all did. And our next meeting is this coming Monday, when we are going to do the next phase of sort of ranking these proposals as to the ones that we think make most sense to fund, and then look at how much we want to fund each of those proposals for. So most, about half of the proposals actually did include a dollar amount. Some of them didn't. And some of the proposals may be approved for the total dollar amount, some maybe for less, but that's where we stand right now. Our goal is to complete this process, hopefully by the end of April, but for sure by the end of May.
And Bill, let me just clarify, I believe, so the committee's work is, you will make recommendations to the Select Board, and then the Select Board would actually allocate the money?
That's correct, yes.
Got it. And the minutes of your meetings are on the town website, I think?
Yes, the minutes of the meetings are on the website and plus a list of all these proposals. The list includes who made the proposal, what it's for, and those that gave a dollar amount. And each of the proposals, if you want to know the details of it, any member can share that with you.
Thank you very much. Dan Steinbauer.
Knowing that the buck stops here at this table on all this money, I just wanted to note that we are really appreciative of all the work that this committee is doing. There are some very smart people, a lot of smart people on this committee, and it will give us a vision. And we will be able to make our decisions more wisely because of their work.
Thank you. Remain on Article Five, transact any other non-binding business thought proper. Have another hand up here? Right here, Polly, and then we'll go up here.
Okay. Yeah, Polly Connell, Krug Road. Since this appears to be a good time to bring up this issue of traffic, really speed control in town, I wanted to open that back up, and I'm sure people have their own particular grievances based on where they live. And it's wonderful, I was glad to learn Underhill's gonna have another four hours of the sheriff's time, so bringing us to 10 hours, $60 an hour, $65, $65 an hour. I guess, and I know maybe the time to speak about specifics is to come to one of the Select Board meetings, but this might be a chance to hear from more folks about their concerns. So I can say, my concern is traffic as it speeds out of Underhill Center toward Cambridge, Pleasant Valley Road. I only know, since I live in the village, I just know... I only know, since I live in the village, I just know what it's like to be someone who walks in the village. You know, with my little granddaughter, or I'm on my way to the town, or the town hall, whatever. And I've got these cars whipping by, there's no way they're doing, I think thirty is what they're allowed. And so I would love to have more surveillance there, I'll just put that out there. I did stop by the Jericho Town Hall yesterday, because I was curious, like Jericho's so obviously over, I don't know, last five, six years, maybe more, has really worked at their traffic calming. I think we're all doing a better job because we have to, you know, we've had all kinds of reminders and sheriff activity. So I'll share what they told me, just so we have something to compare to. Jericho contracts for forty hours a month, we're going to get ten. So we're going to get a quarter of what Jericho gets. So they're paying forty hours times the sixty-five dollars. And for that, we all know what they've got, we see it, we see what they've gotten. And so I'm not saying we spend what Jericho does, but we're not that big. But we might consider doing more. So I'll leave it there.
Good, thanks. I believe we have another comment over here.
Karen McKnight, Bear Town Road, again to the sheriff's department. My question is, how much do they, if they actually catch people and fine them, how much do they, how much is the fine? How much do they get of the fine? Or do we get something reimbursed to us?
Good, complicated question, I, do you know about that?
It is a complicated answer, it has a lot to do with many variables, depending on where the person was stopped. So if they were on a, along Route fifteen, the percentage of money that comes back to the town of Underhill is a smaller amount because it's a state-owned highway versus if they were caught, let's say, on the Irish Settlement Road. So there's a different formula that's used depending on which road the speeder is actually picked up on. So there's not a hard, fast rule that we receive, say, twenty-five dollars, let's say, for every hundred dollars, you know, for someone speeding through town, you know, type of thing. There's not a really black and white answer I could give you, but I can tell you that it all depends on where they are picked up.
So if, for the town highways, not the state, do we get, let's say, a percentage of the catch, we'll call it the catch?
Yes.
Okay. I have one more question.
Where am I going?
Nancy Davis, Corbett Road area. I'm wondering how far out do the sheriffs set up their post? Because on Pleasant Valley, I bike and walk on it regularly, and it's shocking the speed with which the cars go by and the passing and the no-passing lane. They are on such a hurry to get to Underhill Center, I feel as if I'm being pushed off the road going the speed limit.
You have a sneaking hunch that's also a complicated answer.
I can tell you that of the phone calls that I receive as a select board member, I hear from many of you saying how fast people drive on Poker Hill Road and on Pleasant Valley Road. And it goes to figure that those are probably one of the largest stretch of roads that we have in the town. I know that we continually have conversations with the sheriff, they stop by the town offices, I know Brad, and many others, talk with them and saying that, you know, between Harvey Road and the Central School is, you know, an area of concern because of the children that are, you know, outside. But it doesn't take away from the fact that, you know, the farther you go past Dan Mann's house on Corbett Road, where they're still speeding along in that area, and you get by the Kellner, you know, homestead, you know, that straightaway as it goes to Cambridge, you know, where people tend to fly there as well. So I know it's a struggle, I know that we're trying to utilize the ten hours the best that we can, and we're also trying to, you know, implement funds to have those warning signs that they have as you're on the Upper Valley Road going into Jeffersonville to remind people of the speed limit, so that we know that we can't have a sheriff in town twenty-four hours a day, we just don't have the financial means to do that, being a bedroom community. But we can try to put reminders out that, you know, we'll flash to tell people to, you know, please slow down, so that, you know, you know, we all live here, so we want to, we don't want to see anyone get hurt.
One here, then we got a couple going up the back here.
Scott Hymnman, Poker Hill. I can tell you when the radar flashing sign was up by the water tower on Poker Hill, my driveway's just, just right near there. Traffic flies through there specifically in the morning and in the afternoon during the school drop-off and school pickup. When that flashing radar thing was there, traffic slowed down substantially. There are four houses that have a driveway with, that are completely blind to traffic coming from the dirt road section heading towards Route fifteen, mine is one of them. I can't tell you in the past seven years how many times I have almost been hit, either on my bicycle, walking my dog, or just pulling out of my driveway. But when that thing was flashing, there were no issues.
Okay, we have another, sorry, we had a hand up here, then one in the back, I see more over here and over here, we'll get around.
Good old traffic, speeding. John Connell, I'm related to this lady, but personally, I don't believe anything works. I've had several speeding tickets in town myself. Matter of fact, anyway, it's a long story. But I will say this, the town of Danville, Vermont, got fed up with speeding, and they hired a twenty-four-hour, or however many hour a day, police, and there's no speeding. So I'm just saying, personally, flashing things and gilt-written stuff, doesn't work for me. No, unless I'm, anyway, it's all.
And then we'll continue straight to the back and then to the side.
John, we'll continue to pray for you, that you learn to slow down a little bit. But to answer the question a little bit more detailed, that the budget that you just approved on the floor here includes for two of those traffic calming signs. And the idea is going to be for one to be on the Valley Road and one to be on Poker Hill, and to see, you know, what that data, you know, comes back to, and, you know, if we find that that works well, perhaps, you know, additional signs like that could be purchased and approved by the voters here and put other places in town.
A couple on the sides.
Hi, Barbara Eric from Krug Road. You know, John, we just know nothing's going to help you, right? So, but I have a couple questions. What about those red flags that I don't think cost very much money? You know, you stick them on either side of the, like, speed limit sign or the stop signs in town? Because, you know, with people relying on GPS, many people drive River Road, Pleasant Valley, going to Smugglers, they have no idea that there are even stop signs in the center. And more often than not, I see a lot of locals running those stop signs, but people from out of town, like, just don't even pay attention. So it seems like a pretty low-budget solution. I think Nate knows what I'm talking about, those big orange signs? I think that would be helpful. The second is, I know a number of years ago, there was a traffic calming committee in town. And since I live in the center, I know there was a focus there about how we can do aesthetic things, like more trees, or making the bridge that comes into the center, putting yellow stripe lines on either side, sort of narrowing, I think that was part of the original design. So my question is, is there any thought to getting together a committee to sort of study ways to calm traffic, not only in Underhill Center, but Pleasant Valley Road? And I know people fly through the flats as well.
Thank you.
There you are.
No, there's no answer to that.
Not yet, but I'm sure we will have one very shortly about, you know, looking into that possibility, if there's some like-minded individuals that like to, you know, be part of that, we certainly could entertain that.
Another question or comment over here, yes. Oh, this way, there you go. Yeah.
Nancy Gallagher, River Road. It's interesting, we're talking about some of the smaller roads, but about thirty, thirty-five years ago, I tried to raise the issue of speed here at town meeting on River Road, and I got shouted down by about everybody, so I was afraid to bring it up again. But people go sixty, sixty-five miles an hour, and those of us coming out of our driveways on River Road, we don't dare walk on it, it's very scary. So I'm wondering, whatever we decide about these other roads, calming or those radar signs, you're going sixty, sixty-five, if we could add River Road to that? It's quite straight, it's easy to get going, but it's become a bit of a ribbon of rudeness, is what I call it.
And we had a comment over here, next.
Guy Kennedy again. I personally respond very well to the flashing lights, every time. I go into Jeffersonville, there's a flashing light, and it flashes because modern cars are very smooth, they're very quiet, automatic transmissions, downhill, things pick up, and, you know, generally, they're under incredibly good control compared to what cars were when I was a kid and you felt every bump. So, you know, I think it's good to have a reminder. I'm not a big fan of a police state, I wouldn't want to see the amount of hours that Jericho has on our roads with police everywhere telling me what to do. And I think we have generally enough signs, I have a little bit of an aversion to signs because you can't go a hundred yards without a sign to tell you there's going to be another sign coming up after that one. So they're everywhere. But the flashing light does work for me. And just to wrap this up, I think as citizens, as we're all working together here, and we're all contributing, we all have a bit of a responsibility on the road, if we're concerned about the speed, not to speed ourselves. Traffic is not what it used to be. You used to be able to drive to Jeffersonville and not see a car in front or in behind you, but now there's traffic. And all it takes is one person to follow the speed limit, and pretty much without much exception, everybody follows the speed limit. So it's something that we can all do together.
Saw a couple more hands up back here in the back.
Laura Seaman, Range Road. Going to agree a little bit with the gentleman who just spoke. I was stopped by the sheriff after I moved to Underhill about five and a half years ago, and it's triggering for some people. I was alone in my car, and I've learned my lesson, I won't speed in that area again. However, I'm not a fan of increasing the sheriff presence by, you know, ten, twenty-fold. I think the flashing lights and signage are a good route to go, to, as a first step. Since we're on the topic of safety, I can't leave this unspoken. My friend who lives next to the post office in the center is not here, she posts frequently on Front Porch Forum about her experiences in her own driveway, and apparently, over the weekend or recently, she had a quite frightening experience. The handicap spot in front of that post office is not treated as a handicap spot, so I encourage everyone in our community to use it appropriately. But that post office is becoming more and more of a problem because people aren't respecting the neighbors who live around that location. So she's been hit, almost hit, in her driveway, but she's seen things like what happened recently with a handicapped person trying to get into the post office, unable to do so. And it was, you know, someone was just sitting in the handicap spot on their cellphone. So just a reminder to everyone to slow down and, you know, keep your eye out for our own neighbors. Thank you.
Leave you a comment right next to you, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Mike Weisler, Irish Settlement Road. I want to second what Guy said about that flasher heading into Jeffersonville, it gets my foot on the brake too. And then tagged on to what Barbara was saying a few minutes ago about traffic calming. Some years back, it was suggested that the town stripe, the sides, the edge lines on River Road, to create two nine-foot lanes. Wouldn't reduce the width of the pavement, but the width of the striping would result in nine-foot lanes, which tends to make a car driver say, ooh, this is a fairly narrow road, and they slow down a little bit. But that was not deemed appropriate, and wasn't done, but it's something that we might think about. And then your comments about the post office, I use that post office myself, and it's a dilemma. Do I pull over on the right side when I'm returning home headed north? Or do I cut across traffic and park the wrong way on the left side of the road? Neither is a good solution, and I remember learning in my driver's ed many years ago, you don't pull over on the left side of the road to park, you park on the right side, the same direction that you're headed. So really, there's no parking space on the right headed north because it's a handicap space. So I think most of us that use that post office and stop there when we're headed north, we use the handicap space. We're probably not there very long, but it's, there really are no options, so just consider that.
Thank you. I think the select board's heard quite a bit about traffic, and I suspect it'll be an ongoing subject of some discussion. I don't want to limit it, but I also want to make sure if there's other matters to discuss, over here.
Karen McKnight, Bear Town Road. Two questions about the traffic. First, in Underhill Center, I noticed that in other towns in Vermont, the speeding limit in the town, village area is usually twenty-five. And so my question is, why is it thirty? Or consider twenty-five miles per hour, that's not asking a lot, from where the speed change is from forty-five, going north to where it, again, goes back to forty-five. I don't think that's too much, and it's in the village. And secondly, what is the incentive for the sheriff's departments to actually catch the speeders? That was my question, a percentage of the take. I mean, is there something there that is, they need to fish in order to eat? In other words, you know, that's what I'm getting at.
Dan Steinbauer, you had a comment?
I really appreciate this discussion. It brings back memories. When I was on the board about twelve years ago, there was maybe an even more animated discussion. And we ended up, I ended up proposing that we have a traffic committee, and that traffic committee did meet for a while. I'm not proposing that we establish another one. Some of you out there may have been on that committee, and some good things came out of it. The, I appreciated Polly's comment earlier that, you know, we are making some progress with some of the traffic calming, and some of the flashers, and some of the signage, and I think the suggestions of narrowing the roadway, that's an old suggestion, can The speed limit issue, you know, in some ways, that's, we can...
The, the speed limit issue, you know, in some ways, that's, we can begin the process, but some of it is out of our hands, and I, I think that in the center, you know, perhaps that justifies a speed study, which is the first step in justifying the fact that it could be 25. You can't just arbitrarily lower speed limits, because it's not enforceable when that happens. There's a process in doing it, and that could be something that would be on our consideration. But I appreciate the comments, and Bob saying that, you know, you're welcome to come to the select board to keep us abreast of specific areas that are of concern, and raise it in the public comment period, which would put it in, on the public record. So, again, thank you for your discussion and for your awareness, and if we work together, maybe we can get even more results.
We are still on Article Five, to transact any other non-binding business thought proper. Other subjects, yes, over here.
Pat Weisler, Irish Settlement Road. I'm wondering why there's still a sign on Fuller Road that says, "Private road, no trail access, this is not a public playground, this is a private property reserved for the use by residents and their guests only." Is that not a public right-of-way?
We are in process with that, and other signs that are on Class IV roads, and it is indeed a Class IV road, a public right-of-way, and it connects us to the Crane Brook Trail, you know, that is used for recreation. So, the sign is an error, there are some other signs on Class IV roads that are also Now, that is a committee that is currently engaged, because the Class IV road policy has been on the select board agenda for quite a long time, and it, it's a difficult, it's a very difficult and sensitive kind of thing, maybe that's why it's been put off, maybe. So, this committee, again, supporting the select board, we are going to be addressing the policy. All Class IV roads are not the same. Some are almost, but they aren't, considered private roads, because not many people go on it. Some are well-trafficed, like Upper Stevensville Road, where, you know, the public go to the state, and the residents of that road are required to maintain the road, just as, you know, you would maintain your driveway. The state is one of the residents, so they, they contribute to that, for the plowing. But, you know, I, it's just an example of all Class IV roads are not the same, and that's why, again, some pretty smart people are on this committee that are going to make recommendations to the select board, and we are going to welcome that, and hopefully solve the problem of misplaced and erroneous signs.
Thank you. Anything else for Article Five? Very good discussion around traffic and safety. One more here.
Kale Romanoff, River Road, I'm on the planning commission as well. One thing I just wanted to bring up, kind of tangential to the safety stuff, there was a lot of talk about safety in the center, and then there was talk about safety on River Road. One thing I know that's been talked about in the planning commission and ARPA committee is discussion of a sidewalk in the center, and I know there has in the past, and a little bit still today, discussion of potentially a multi-use path or a bike path going along River Road. And I think either of those options would be incredibly helpful for safety on River Road or in the center. And I just wanted to make sure that that voice got brought up today, because I think that's something that should be discussed by the select board, I know it is being discussed in part by the ARPA committee. I think it's very important, walking children on, in the center is not very safe right now, particularly that bridge in between the stop sign and the town hall, but anywhere in general on that stretch, and as people said earlier, River Road, they wouldn't, they would walk on River Road, the people that live, have lived there, so that whole stretch is particularly dangerous for pedestrian and bicycle traffic, and I think something we should address over the next couple of years.
Anything else for Article Five? Okay, none so appearing. Let me move on, and I will just read Articles Six, Seven, and Eight, but there is no action we need to take, these are Australian ballot questions, and the voting remains open until 7:00 PM this evening. Article Six is to elect all town officers and school directors as required by law. Article Seven is, shall the voters authorize the purchase of an excavator to replace the 1997 excavator and borrow an amount not to exceed 286,000, for a term not to exceed five years pursuant to 24 VSA Section 1786, Paragraph A, Subparagraph B. And Article Eight is, shall the voters authorize the purchase of a trailer to replace the 2005 trailer used for mobilizing heavy equipment and borrow an amount not to exceed 45,000, for a term not to exceed five years pursuant to 24 VSA Section 1786, Paragraph A, Subparagraph B. And that brings us to the end of our official agenda for the day. My watch says it's about 11:18. If there is no further business to come before us today, a motion to adjourn is in order. Roland Burrows moves, that is a non-debatable motion, all those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and we thank you very much for participating today.